Okay, it is Monday, March 14th, it's 4:02. And we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll go through planning commission members. Do we have Howard Tritt?
Here.
Abby Dahman. Bryce Erlich. Joey Edwards.
Yeah.
Lupe Bobedia.
Here.
And Jamie Seifer.
Here, and it's Cypher, by the way.
Cypher, sorry. I always do that. I think I do it the other. I always think it should be Cypher, and then I say Seifer. Anyways, sorry.
It's good. Everybody does.
Okay, so we have county commissioners, and I don't think anybody's on quite yet. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, we have minutes to approve from February 7th, as well as February 28th. Did everybody have a chance to review those minutes? Anybody, and we can, I see Bryce is on here now, so he can be counted as present. Did, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes for, sorry, I'm switching screens here, the 7th and the 28th?
I was not present at the 28th, but I can move to approve minutes from February 7th.
Okay, we have a motion for this February 7th meeting.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Lupe. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we have minutes from, the 28th. February 28th. Anybody, I was not here either for those ones, but I think that was actually why it got tabled.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes from the February 28th meeting.
Okay, great. Do you have a second?
I second the motion for the minutes for February 28th.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of passing minutes for the 28th? Say aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. And we have, I can do a little bit of, I can do two-thirds of the commissioner roll call of Commissioner Fiedler and Commissioner Mudge seem to be on. Okay, so I will, I'm gonna let, Anne, I'm gonna let you take over staff update for all of the fun things that you have on here on our agenda.
Great, thank you. So I did want to announce to everyone that we do have a new housing director in Lake County. Jackie Wheelahan, many of you know her, she, from her working in the assessor's office, and then also being a strong presence in the real estate market in Lake County. So she has joined the county team and just wanted to update everyone. I wasn't able to connect with her this evening. I was wanting to extend a welcome from the planning commission, but maybe we'll be able to do that at another time. Also, just kind of, I think that some of you may be aware that land use worked with the county and the city together to apply for a planning grant through DOLA. In order to look for ways to, in both of the municipal code and the county code, ways to support affordable and workforce housing initiatives. Also, within that scope of work is some work to look at setting up a housing authority that might be multi-jurisdictional. There is, and Jackie is with Sarah Mudge. And so Jackie, we, myself and the planning commission and the board just wanted to extend a big welcome to you as the new housing director. And just let you know that we're so happy that you're on board. So sorry to put you on the spot, Jackie.
I'm excited to see you all. I recognize Chris, I recognize Tim, and I recognize Bryce, but now I don't, there you are, okay. I don't know the rest of you. I can't wait to meet you, though.
And likewise, I am sure from all of us and anyone else that wants to extend a welcome to Jackie, I'll be silent for a minute.
Welcome, Jackie. This is Howard Tritt.
Howard Tritt, hello.
Welcome, Jackie. This is Heather Lind.
Hello, Heather, there you are.
And hi, Jackie. I'm Abby Dahman. I'm another planning commission member with unstable internet, so my apologies for not having video, but we're excited.
Yes, I'm excited too. There's a lot happening, so it's very, very exciting. Thank you very much for the inclusion.
Jackie's office is where Kayla's office was, so that's just a couple doors down. There's, it's across from the treasurer's office. If you ever want to stop by and say hi.
All right, I'll let you get back to your meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie, welcome.
Welcome aboard, Jackie.
And so just to kind of go back to what we were talking about, so within that scope of work is just a look at both codes, potentially maybe more of a focus on the city municipal code as a lot of times workforce and affordable housing initiatives have better connectivity and meet more the properties that we would traditionally see within the city. But also included in that, like I mentioned, was a look at the creation of potential multi-jurisdictional housing authority to support in perpetuity housing that may come out of Jackie's work. And then a discussion between level sanitation and park the water about ways to further incentivize some of the housing goals that have been identified. So that's, that's kind of a big, high-level review of kind of the scope of work of the planning grant. But we were the only multi-jurisdictional grant that was awarded, so that's pretty exciting as well. And then just, just to give you a quick update on some upcoming applications, I do think that we are going to see a very, very busy development year. Staff has had conversations with Gateway Development. For some of you that are unfamiliar, this is a proposed planned unit development located at the junction of 91 and 24. Potentially with just under 500 housing units as an outcome, potentially. And whereas this development came into us previously and had a conditional sketch plan approval, that approval has lapsed, and so this proposal will be coming back to us as a new sketch plan proposal. So I do anticipate seeing that at some point this year. Also, we've been in discussion with the two other new applications that will potentially be coming forward, both in PUD densities and adding again, probably between the two, another maybe 400 units of housing. So those are significant when you think about our population being at seven, approximately 7,750 something, I believe. So those are all, you know, pretty significant negotiations that we may enter into this year. So just want to kind of let everyone know that there's a lot on the horizon. I will be sending out a staff report on the rezoning that we'll be hearing on Monday. This is a zone district that by code is urban multifamily zoning. And strangely enough, there is some of it in remote areas at the junction of 82 and 24 and Twin Lakes. So that application and staff report will be coming forth. And then we'll get a little into it as the last new business item. But also just want to kind of get everybody's idea on maybe hosting a DOLA training. We've done these almost annually, and it's just a really great informational training that DOLA does for jurisdictions to just talk about roles, both, you know, of the planning commission and just the processes in general. And so they're just kind of nice reminders, and I think everybody has a good takeaway from them. So I may have already taken something off your agenda this evening by launching into it, but it just seemed to make sense to go ahead and mention it now. So I think that's all I have, Heather. Unless anyone has any questions, happy to, if you have any specific questions about anything that's staff, that's happening currently, happy to share those. You did just get back from a week-long training at the Colorado chapter of the Code Institute, which largely is on building code. And really exciting, lots of good information. So for anyone interested, we are looking to adopt a new building code this year. Hopefully, the Board of Review, along with some consultants that are assisting staff, we're trying to target bringing for some information to the Board and the community in April.
Awesome, thank you. So for clarification on the DOLA training, is that just mean that it's delayed, or we should still talk about doing it?
Oh, I think I had it on as number three.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe we could just see, maybe when we get to that, that point, if anybody would like staff to look into trying to set up a time for that.
Got it. Okay, cool. Great. Any questions for Anne on on that fun new information? I think it's all great. I mean, we're you're right, we're gonna have a busy couple years, I think, ahead of us, so. Okay. Next is the debrief on the Backcountry Zone Code Rezone Amendment, and there were some, I know that the commissioners had a couple of changes or conditions that they made, and I think wanted to debrief with us on those. And Anne, I don't know if you want to lead that, or, yeah?
Sure, if it's okay with Sarah and Jeff, I would just kind of start the basics of the conditions, and then they each might have some additional talking points, or might want to elaborate them on in a little more clarity. So I think the first one that makes a lot of sense, I believe, is that when we do a code amendment of this magnitude, it's really good to monitor the outcomes and make sure that we don't have any unintentional consequences. So the Board made a condition, and I don't have the exact language, but I'm going to just paraphrase, that that building and land use staff will monitor and report to the Board of County Commissioners through a standing adjourned item for a minimum of a year, and we may go further. You know, and then at the discretion of the Board. So just to let them know, you know, how things are going, and what kind of interest and pre-application meetings that are coming in, will notify the Board with every site plan, application that comes in. Of course, that will be a public hearing process. But we will be monitoring and reporting back, keeping track of the interest, any kind of compliance, any kind of approvals. Just the outcome of everything, just to make sure that we can get in front of any unintended consequences. And then I certainly would love, or invite the Board to add any other thoughts that they have on. One's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and I was, I was just trying to pull up that document that kind of I'd been taking notes on during our meeting for some of those. But the monitoring also really figure out what the threshold and get those communities going very well with folks at Forest Service. So that we know what, if we are having, if private land or within holdings are, if these, if there are problems that are being created or exacerbated by, potentially by the code. So I hope that we can, with so much other activity going on in partnership with those land management agencies, I think that we will do a fine job communicating that.
Awesome. And so I'll move on to item number two. The Board definitely wants to make a commitment to develop further ways to incentivize conservation of the backcountry zone petition, potentially like aligning with the forest management plan and other considerations for, and others incentives that could come out of conservation. So I think there is a strong desire and dedication to further look for ways to incentivize more conservation of that country. And I will certainly let Sarah Jeff put that maybe a little more in their own words, because I think those are real intentional works that they would like to see come forward.
I can take a crack, and I mean, I think this was something that we felt like there were some goals around conservation, or, you know, scenic preservation, you know, open space protection, public access to recreation assets that, you know, maybe the land code alone wasn't the only or best tool in some cases. So at least my recollection or intent on this was to sort of just articulate that as something in our minds that we needed to be, you know, complementing, you know, what the land code can achieve with, you know, with, with other, you know, either governmental or non-governmental, you know, incentives and programs to achieve some of those goals.
Something we did about were, you know, if you, like Jeff said, but, but kind of diving into that a little bit more, you know, and these aren't things that we listed in the conditions necessarily, but, you know, if you have a forest, forest management plan, do you get any kind of square footage incentive, if you, a full ownership, do you get some additional incentive? If you put a conservation easement, you know, all the things that we could think of to add to minimizing impact in those areas. I think we want to start brainstorming.
Great, thank you. The next item I have is, and I can give you a bit of an update about this. Prior to the adoption of the resolution, staff shall consult with the county attorney regarding the ability to impose a penalty for non-compliance. So as the code was written, the draft was that, you know, there is, in the event that complaints are received, they go through a revocation hearing before the Board. And so they have a hearing process built into the code to address compliance, but compliance largely when there is already a built structure. That's kind of, that was kind of the main focus, because the remedy in one case is a revocation of the certificate of completion, meaning you can't occupy the structure until the conditions have been addressed satisfactorily by the Board. At the approval, based on the approval of the Board. So there was a scenario brought forth to staff, well, what if there's just been incredible arbitrary cutting of trees or excessive earthwork done, something that was not within their site plan approved approval, and with what they've submitted to the county. And so we looked into, I did meet with Chris, and we did discuss looking at not only 9904 violations, but pointing back to the penalties within the 9904 ordinance that already exists for establishing the fine. So we have, so the way the code was written, we already talked about a fine, but we needed to have to, we needed to point it back to where that fine could be found. And I see that Chris is also on here too, so I don't want to put you on the spot, Chris. But do you want to add any more clarity to that? I'm feeling like I'm missing just a little bit of what we talked about.
No, actually, I think you described it fairly well. But I'm happy to try to help answer any questions if, if any of the planning commissioner, county commissioners are confused.
So I think the nice thing about it is that we have, we've built in more remedies for non-compliance.
Yes.
So.
And honestly, I think one of the intent here was just sort of a feeling that some of these areas more off the beaten path, non-compliance issues can get further down the road than, you know, than somewhere right in town. You know, so some stronger, you know, both monitoring and, you know, tools to deal with non-compliance were in order.
We also talked about actually getting, building the capacity to do monitoring and identifying where the non-compliance is, because I think that's one thing that likely my fellow commissioners heard, but I heard from a lot of people questioning and having concerns about this was, well, you know, my neighbor has had a something up, and the tarp's been flapping around for two years, and nobody's done anything. So I think it'd be great if we could really enforce all of those things and get work on what that staffing structure looks like across even some departments perhaps. So that's the conversation I think we're having internally as well.
And this is Chris, and one thing I know when Anne and I met, we talked about, you know, instead of having to kind of specify in the backcountry zoning, you know, all the different, you know, penalties and violations and stuff like that, to simply refer to where they're located in the code. So that way, if things do change, you know, you don't have to update this code, but also because it in general puts everybody on notice, and they can't come back and say, well, I didn't know, or, you know, this type of thing.
That brings up my question, which is, does that code already have kind of like a fine structure in place? Would we be following that with this enforcement, or would we be creating a new fine structure thresholds for fines?
So it would fall into whatever the existing violation is, so it would align with whatever, you know, just like using 9904 as an example. So that, that has a fine, and, you know, built into it, so it just refers back now to whatever tools that we need to address whatever the individual complaint or outcome of that complaint might be. And I think just to piggyback on what the Board is saying, I think that, you know, with this help, I think that the code is really helpful. I think that we are just going to continue to look at ways to address compliance and capacity to address compliance. So I think that that's something that we'll continue to build on and look at ways that, that like Sarah mentioned, you know, maybe across different departments to really achieve the level of compliance that we're hopeful to bring forward, or committed to bring forward. So I think it, you know, it's kind of twofold, but I think that the code itself, the written code will, has, has created a great basis for that. And then we'll be looking at ways to complement that and bring it to the level that the Board is dedicated to bringing it to.
And I remember from the meeting, Commissioner Fiedler, you mentioning the high-resolution imagery maybe being a good tool. Just going through that again for this year and everything, and having the changes in front of me, I do think that'd be a really good tool. Which, you know, would allow us some remote access to these remote areas, so.
That's a great point, Bryce. And I think it'll be, you know, it'll take the tools from multi-departments to probably get to the goal that we want. So I think that's great. Thank you for elevating that. The last condition that I have, and I'm going to defer to Sarah just a bit to articulate it a little bit better. But it's in regards to roads, road access and further work that's already underway on on use of county roads and maintenance and and different areas of concern, but that are very much on the radar and coming forward. So I need to make sure that that future work is included and thoughtful on how it benefits or aligns with that country.
And, yeah, so the Forest Service is finalizing their latest iteration of their motorized use and roadway system, and then we have been following and advocating for legislation, current legislation to make the county's authority more explicit in our ability to designate over the snow and seasonal uses throughout the year regarding a greater timeline, as well as what uses may be designated in certain areas, and I, the, the, I'll have to, I have my notes here. And it says, shall complete documentation, and I'm not sure exactly what we, I can't remember what, what our language was, but the public works will prioritize through this year following the decision on the legislation. Documenting, identifying, and all of our roads and what they currently, you know, how we currently treat them and designate them. And that will aim, maybe year to year, we certainly will have the conversation coming up regarding motorized uses and commercially used, but regardless of that, really, there are, there are certain roadways that I think we can easily identify now, like Western Pass and County Route 4 around turquoise as areas that the county would not intend to plow or change maybe methods of operation. But having that documented, because currently there is not a great documentation on our full road system.
Thank you. Sarah, you said that much better than I could have. So thank you.
That might be generous of you, but.
No, no, I think and so I think overall, and I'll let the Board in with any comments that they have, but staff perspective and takeaway is that it was identified the backcountry is a good first step, but that there are definitely need to be vigilant and make sure that the outcomes are as intended, and that if there are evidence in establishing what that threshold is, if, if we need to find tune. So we'll be doing our work as staff to make sure that we elevate that information to the Board. And then I think the other takeaway that I have is that, again, this is a great starting place, and that there is opportunity to enhance and do further work to meet the goals of the backcountry intent. So I think that was, was my takeaway as staff, and then certainly if the Board has anything else to, to offer.
This is Howard Tritt. I'm glad to see we're so far along now, after all this struggle. And I think we've got a real good thing, and I'm glad to see these additional conditions. I do have a question on the third one, the penalty, just 9904. Is that readily available to the, any, anybody that's interested in trying to put in, out, your building in the outdoors? Is that, is that, they can, is, can they find that in your office, Anne?
Absolutely. They can find it, we can attach it as part of the administrative paperwork, or we can, you know, a lot of these metals will be done digital, so we can absolutely include it in the packet. And now 9904 is less of a, you know, it's more about rubbish, unlicensed vehicles and nuisances. So it, you know, it's kind of more of a cautionary than a kind of a how-to, but absolutely information that we can always have readily available. We can have it on the website, we can include it in the submittal package with the paperwork. But yes, we can, we can make sure that that is readily available.
Thank you.
Oh, I think the only other thing that, and I'm not sure, you know, what everybody, some thoughts about this, the process itself, this is the first time that I can recall, maybe other than when we kind of did inclusionary zoning, that we really engaged with the community in a more robust way. Offering the town hall meeting, and it just, just kind of wanted to hear from both the Board and the Planning Commission on the process, and if there were any good takeaways or things that potentially, you know. you know, good information for staff moving forward in ways that you would like to see things done a little differently, or, or if we did well in some area of it.
Think we should celebrate the fact that we got it done. I think it's awesome. It was a big lift. So I think that's great. And it, it took a while, but I think it was a good process because we all got to say, we all got a chance to kind of work through what we were thinking about it. So I really liked the public process and the extended public hearing period too. And I think even having those extra few weeks was ended up being really good in the end. With a couple of those delays and table. So. Yeah, I think it was really good overall and set the table for how we can maybe approach further code changes or identify areas we need to rezone.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think the town hall meeting was a huge plus because I think that the regular public hearings are a lot more formal. And although we did still have great participation, I feel like at that, I think the participation in the town hall was a little bit more robust because it was a little bit more comfortable. It was more of an open forum of people feeling like they can, they can ask their questions and get their answers without it being, I must attack or I must support, you know? And so I think that was, I would, you know, I would say that that almost should become, you know, a, a common practice for us for anything that has to do with code changes or, you know, any, anything on, on our side of things versus independent applicants. But I think that's a great process. I think the thing I would love to, I guess, ask the commissioners a little bit about is how we can or even I, as far as running the meeting can improve the like the cooperation with you guys. Cause I, I sometimes felt like in this process that we were working against each other instead of with each other. And that just doesn't necessarily seem like the, the appropriate way that it should work. And so, so if during our, all of our work sessions, if the commissioners didn't feel comfortable having the conversations or being a part of those conversations during that time. Cause I think like, Sarah, I think you mentioned in the meeting that like, this is the first time we're getting to talk about this. And that was a really big surprise to me because I'm like, well, I feel like we've all had like lots of public work sessions about this and I don't, I, I mean, even though I guess it's our public or our work session, I guess I just assumed that all of those like joint work sessions were the opportunity for everybody to kind of collaborate and make the code amendment what it was. But then at the end, I didn't feel like it was, I felt like it was still a planning commission code amendment and not necessarily one that had been already fully vetted and supported by the commissioners. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can do better in the future to make that not feel like such a struggle or such a maybe uncomfortable is the right word situation.
And Heather, I think, um, I think for me, not even unique to this scenario, but often, I mean, we you know, as an example of getting some information that really helped me, I finally got in touch with Uray County's Director of Land Use to talk about how their zoning actually is implemented. And that was the afternoon before our board meeting to consider the planning commission. So it's like those things that there are just some gaps that like, maybe the planning commissioners can't necessarily fill or answer, but and again, really not unique to the planning commission, but where there are like real concerns from the board. I just would love like more questions from planning commissioners and encouraging more questions from the entire planning commission to ask and understand. Try to better understand like the gravity of those concerns or why we or individually may feel that those are really big deals. I know I got a couple of questions from some commissioner, planning commissioners, and I think it's just, you know, maybe we just go through like a really like elementary exercise. And everybody has to ask a question because I think certain, you know, there's like, there's some folks who really know and have a history of what's going on. And I think everybody really respects that and appreciates that. But I, and, and I really think that the training will help everybody to, to feel more confident in asking any question. But I, if I can say one thing to all of you, it's that there's, there's no stupid question. You know, if there's, if you're not, if, I mean, if I'm asking some of the questions, right? Like as one of the folks who's more experienced in the group chatting about something, then there is something missing. And even just talking through that and thinking through that together. It's going to be really helpful for everyone and it's not a waste of time and it's always a good exercise. I think.
Yeah. And I can just add from my experience, I mean, I think one, one thing in particular for this happened for me is like, you know, what, when I came on as a new commissioner, this sort of felt like it was about to get over the finish line. So I'll just be honest. Like I was like, well, sure, these people know what they're talking about. I'm going to go learn something else new that I need to learn. So I don't think, I, I don't know. I don't think I paid enough attention to it as I came on as a commissioner. As I should have, you know? And, and, and then I'll say just going forward, I think this did, you know, this opened my eyes. And I think I'd sort of viewed the planning commission as like, oh, the planning commission gets their shot at a topic. And then we get our shot and sort of thinking of it sequentially like that. And I think Heather, to your comments, and I really appreciate you asking the question and sort of raising that, that issue. I think, you know, that this experience has definitely changed my mind to viewing it not as sequential like that, but like, yeah, we really need to get involved. And pay attention, you know, sooner. And, and, and raise those questions. Cause yeah, it's not great to get into a year plus or 10 year, whatever, year plus process. And then, you know, have a whole bunch of questions at the end, having been on the staff end of things. That is not fun.
Heather, I want to echo your comments about just, I think the success of the town hall as a easy, low stakes kind of opportunity to listen and, and have more of a conversation with the citizens. And I think the turnout that we got even despite bumping it a few times and moving stuff around speaks to like the people who are paying attention really want that kind of an opportunity. And I think in that same vein, to your point about how can we all kind of be more on the same page? I don't know exactly what the answer is in this conversation is, I think timely and interesting to be having. But you know, a lot of folks will show up sometimes to these public meetings and will only see our commissioners asking questions of the planning commission, for example, in a public forum. And I think there's an opportunity to have those questions answered maybe ahead of time and have the public. I don't want to say like show, but it is kind of a show, right? We're like presenting some stuff and to be united and all well informed, I think will help instill confidence in our ability to deal with whatever happens in the future. And that it's just a good thing to think about for, you know, what are we saying in front of the public and what can maybe we figure out ahead of time before the meeting? So I think this is a great to be talking about.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. I think, I mean, just to clarify a little bit, I mean, all of them have to be public, but as far as the ones where we're doing our presentations. I think we, and there's not very many applications that like stem from the planning commission and then go for approval. So typical development applications that we're going to see throughout the year, that format's going to be a little bit different. There won't necessarily be questions of the planning commission. It will always be of the applicant. But it does bring up a good point because I think right now our setup is a joint, you know, if somebody makes an application and it's a, it goes through the public hearing process. It's a joint public hearing between the planning commission and the county commissioners. And then that public hearing is over, then it goes to the county commissioners for approval or denial of our recommendation. And there's not a second public hearing. And I know that there's some talk about changing that process, which I really, really hope we don't do because I think there's huge benefits to continuing the single public hearing process. But if instead, what I think is if there's this joint public process, public hearing process where the commissioners and the county in the, in the planning commission feel equally able to ask the questions and participate in the conversation. If we feel that the public isn't adequately noticed or present for that meeting or whatever, that it's, that it could be common practice for us to table that to the next meeting. I think that if it switches to where the planning commission has their own public hearing and then the county commissioners have their own public hearing. I think essentially people won't be showing up two hours because hours won't matter. There won't be, there will essentially maybe not be a reason for, for our planning commission to necessarily exist. And I think then you have different information going to two different public hearing. I, I think it could get kind of messy. Whereas if you, if you set it up where we have it, the way we have it, but we all know that, hey, you know what? I feel like questions just still aren't answered here. To Sarah's point, everybody's got to be willing to speak up. Like there are no dumb questions. And I think we have to be able to ask the questions and try to get the information. And if we don't getting it all in that first public hearing, then we motion to table it and move it to the next one so that we can get the answers we need. So anyway, that's, that's my vote and where I would love to see some further. And like I said, if we need to work on format of those meetings so that there is a better format for everybody to feel like they can speak and can ask questions. Then I want to change that, you know, because I think we are going to get really busy over the next year with some really contentious, probably development applications coming up. And I think it, we just all need to be on the same page and, and ready to go with that. And I, I want to feel like everybody's heard and everybody's included in that conversation because it is true that the, the best ideas come from that collaboration. So that's kind of my two cents on that.
It's, and I am sorry, I'm, I feel, I'm not a black screen. I'm sorry. I'm painted. I hate that my internet is being rocky, but I think one thing that could maybe be helpful and I, and I know I'm not even a part of the new wave of planning commissioners. So I have to kind of hang my head a bit because I have been a part of this group for well over a year. But I think just really robust background. And I, and I don't even, and I think that could just be in the form of like, like, starting with some, some, some solid basics just around like what type of file, like, you know, parameters around. And, and so I know I feel like it certainly would help me, but then, but then certainly folks that are attending any of our meetings that, that are, that are just, you know, residents in the county. I think the, the thing that kind of painted that picture for me, just as an example, where like the folks who didn't understand that we can't change like the zoning for forest service land or BLM land, like that when, when I was sitting there at that town hall meeting, I was like, like, whoa, like that's, that's kind of planning one-on-one, but like, but maybe that's not a bad thing to, to start at, just to make sure we're all on the same page, kind of lowest common denominator sort of argument. I think would be helpful because certainly I, I think I get, I certainly get the broad strokes, but when we get into the nuance and the minutia of, of some of the, of this file and really any file. I think, I think that's, that's where I, I may get lost or I don't, I kind of get the big picture, but maybe I don't get like those really nitty gritty details sometimes. So and certainly I'll, I'll speak up. So just a thought. A bit more time on that upfront education.
Heather and all of you. I, uh, looking back at this case, I think back in the, in the past where we would have different cases. And we take it to the commissioners. And a lot of times they just rubber stamp. And I think that this system, this system where we went through this time where we went back and forth, back and forth. And we got the commissioners input more than we, than I've ever seen on any case in my tenure. I think we've come up with one heck of a good policy for backcountry. I mean, I know I can't, I don't say it's bulletproof. But I say it's pretty darn close. And I, I've certainly appreciated on the back, all of the input we have got from the commissioners. And by the way, I've got another new camera and it still don't work. I think one of you guys are shutting me out on purpose. But you know, it works for everybody except PZ.
I guess.
Start your video. I keep doing it. I do it. And what it says is cannot start video.
I mean, and I would be totally open to meeting in person again, if, if we get to that level of comfort. I, I think that would, that would help us to and, and with Howard's perpetually defunct camera. I think that would be great.
Yeah, we do miss seeing your face, Howard.
Yeah, they say, oh, don't get that ugly guy on. I know what's going on. No, I agree. I think it's time that we, we can go in, in, you know, everybody else is doing it. And I know that meeting room at the courthouse is pretty small. But is there a way we can do something like the recreation board does or Mineral Belt Trail go into a bigger room? Then of course you would have problems with all the, the gear you gotta haul back and forth, the recording and all. Anyway, we'll work on it. Thank you very much, everybody.
I'm all in favor of going back to in person as well. And I think that goes along with this discussion of trying to open up just more collaboration and be on the same page. You just can't replace the dynamic conversations that happen in person versus this, you know, one-sided Zoom call.
Also, one was going to say that I do appreciate the town hall and just being in person or offering the hybrid version, just for folks who are not comfortable yet being in person, just offering both models. And so I think that was great that we did that for the town hall. And also for me, I, I know it took a little bit, but in terms of like diversity, inclu- inclusion, I do love that when it's a big thing, although some folks who speak Spanish or do not, are not in present, but just having it, a document in Spanish was just a huge win for us. And I feel like that was an important stepping stone for us. And even though it's more work for myself, but I loved doing it and just having that information and just similar what Abby was saying and, and Sarah, thank you for voicing it. Yeah, sometimes like just asking questions. So I, I don't feel confident in, in the information or whatnot, but like it, just asking questions and just sorry, you pointing out like there are no question. It's stupid. It's just, I feel like if I ask you more questions, I'm, I'm learning more and being more aware. And so I do appreciate that.
Well, and, and just for, you know, a reference for that, I've, I think that I've decided that I've been on here since I was pregnant with my daughter who is 18 today. And I still ask lots of questions. I ask Anne all the time, what is this? What is this? How is this happening? So it doesn't matter how long, you know, you've been on here for, you're going to have questions and you, the only way we're going to get anywhere is if we're all asking them in fully, fully understanding whatever it is that we're doing. So please, please, yeah, I agree that that's a huge thing. And Chris, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, sorry. I, I was just going to mention in terms of going back to the live meetings and such, you know, I think that's great. The other thing that seems to be pretty universal is the increase in participation by members of the public. When you do offer the hybrid approach, and especially given the times that the meetings are, you know, a lot of folks aren't home from work yet. They might be like, bovey, you know, driving and on Zoom at the same time kind of stuff, you know, in order to participate. So I would encourage you before you get rid of the hybrid option altogether to, to perhaps think about that and decide if you want to continue to. to, to perhaps think about that and, and decide if you want to continue to allow it to be a, a part, because I noticed like today and such, the, the chat's disabled. So I don't find that allowing that hybrid option would create disruptions for your meeting and such, but at least would allow the citizens to be more informed. And with some of these contentious voting and land use issues, you might want them to have that option to hear or to give them every opportunity to listen in so that they don't really have the excuse of not knowing or not having access to the meetings and such.
Yeah, that's a great point. And I don't know, I mean, I know we had the town hall at city hall because they had that really awesome hybrid capabilities. Is that something the county can have access to or? Because I agree, I think the participation honestly with Zoom is much higher, even though I don't necessarily know that for us this group, it's necessarily more productive than being in person. I think that the public participation is huge when we allow Zoom. So I agree that that should continue, but I just don't know if we have the capabilities, I guess, of that.
And I was just gonna offer if, you know, I've offered this to, to other county agencies and stuff too. You know, municipal courtroom is technically only used one day a month. And it's a pretty good size. And so we have the owl and the Zoom capabilities in, in the courtroom as well. So if, if the ci- if city hall, the ci- city council chambers weren't available or something like that, the only challenge I can see is the potential of the timing on it because obviously there'd have to be a staff member or somebody there after five o'clock in order to, or you know, for folks to, to be able to leave, come and go after five o'clock if it's a non-city council meeting day. But I, I think that's something we can, a, a logistics, you know, issue we can work into. But I'm happy for y'all to have access to that room if, if necessary.
I think that's a, that's a great suggestion, Chris. I, you know, the one thing that I would say about the ti- town hall, and it was really nice to have the hybrid was the audio, though. The audio was a little challenging to be able to hear everyone. So like at the courtroom, like you said, Chris, might be set up a little bit better. Also, Sarah had put in the chat and we did another meeting up there, CMC. I think, so I think as staff, I can start looking at options to, that would support a hybrid meeting and send that out and, and we can talk about options. Because I do think that we do have some locations. I hadn't even thought about municipal court. So thank you so much, Chris. I actually didn't even know that. So I think we could start talking about maybe some potential locations that would really support good engagement with everyone. So that's great. Well, and the other thing I was just going to mention, Abby, you brought up a super great point. And I think that sometimes in the preparation of a staff report for everyone, I have to say that sometimes I go into it giving a little bit of explanation about process or just the code itself. But sometimes I do come at it with kind of an assumption that everybody has kind of the same level of knowledge on, on certain applications. And, and it's a really good reminder to me that as we start this year and we potentially will see be seeing applications for planned unit development, this may be members first time in, in seeing, you know, those kind of applications. I think really being mindful of that will be good in the preparation of the staff report. And also, please, please call me, email me anytime if there is something that you want to talk about that you're just not getting and you don't really understand the language in the staff report or certain idea that, that we've talked about or something. So the one thing about going through this legislative process and a code amendment, we had lots of time to have work sessions and kind of talk, although new things came up all the time. But we had that space. When we get into a quasi judicial situation with an applicant, we don't always have that opportunity. But you, any of you can talk to me anytime. Tell me what your concerns are. I can research them. And I can get you the good information that you need. If I don't have it, I will find it. Or I will look into that agency that you might have a concern. If it's a forest service issue, if it's a I know some of you are really good about going directly to that source and getting it. But if you need some aspect, please just reach out, let me know. And that's my role. That's my job. That's, I'm here to support all of you. So if, you know, when we're in those application processes and there's something in there and you can't have those conversations between each of you, I'm, I'm here. I'm, I'm the one that you need to reach out to because I'll get you what you need or I'll try really hard.
Jamie.
Thanks, Heather. Anne is definitely right. I have sent her lots of questions via email and she's great at answering them. So great that we have an informational resource. I just wanted to make a mention about the town hall and the sound issues. I was actually the contractor who put in that sound stuff. And I think the last meeting was a training issue. They had a staff changeover and some stuff got lost in translation. So I was actually just over there last week. And I feel pretty confident that Lori is up to speed now for using the seven microphones on the dais and the other things. So I think we've got a lot of options there. I definitely think we should keep the hybrid format. And to that point, I don't know if the chat in this particular meeting is disabled on purpose or not. I think that can be a useful thing, but I think it's also a worthy conversation of how do we want to encourage people to use it, discourage people to use it? How are we monitoring that? I know sometimes people can just like add a little note and they don't need to like take the one singular microphone to kind of add some stuff. So I don't know who decides that, but something to think about for, you know, what we want to do in the future, if we're going to keep doing the hybrid thing.
Yeah, we'll probably have to explore that a bit because usually what ends up, if, if you're in a public hearing format, we really need people to be on, kind of on the record. And so they need to be at the microphone. Because then there ends up being a lot of dialogue between Zoom callers on the chat back and forth with each other. And not in that more organized fashion of, of actually directing questions and comments to the applicant and the planning commission. So and if, and if some of us are engaged in those direct questions and we can't watch the chat at the same, you know, there's just two. So chat typically is disabled, doesn't necessarily need to be disabled for this evening because it's just us, but but for the public hearing piece where we have to really make sure that we have people on the record. I think we have to probably keep that turned off, but but yeah, I think we're going to keep learning. I think this, the Zoom thing might be one, one good thing that's come out of the COVID, this COVID mess. Because I think it could be a really great way to engage more people in the process. So, yeah. Commissioner Much.
I just wanted to offer to, I don't know, I think inherently with a lot of the questions that come to Anne and staff from the board and the planning commission get answered and addressed in a in the staff report. But something that I also was trying to be deliberate in doing for back country because there were a lot of continued questions between town halls and the next conversations, and then even our final decision was just to bring those back up personally of what my concerns were and then reiterate how those were addressed and why I no longer had those concerns. So I just offer that to planning commissioners to and or staff to you know, ask, ask the rhetorical question that you now know, might know the answer to or still aren't satisfied with. In any, any meeting or hearing, whether it's quasi judicial or legislative. So that everybody else can understand like your perspective and what maybe you might be hung up on and, and if that's a shared concern or consideration.
Awesome. I think so. So the only other thing I just want to, if you're looking for other possible spaces, I guess, and we thought about this with the town hall too. And I do think that it got confusing for some people. I guess I would opt for something that's county property so that there, it's very clear whose meeting it is and what it's for. It's really hard in this town sometimes for people to really understand that the city and the county work differently from each other. And so if we were looking at city hall, I just would be concerned with making sure, I, I, I think we would just have to explore what our communication is with people to, to really dig in hard that we're not the city, we're the county. Because I can, I, I just, that's the only thing, I guess, I obviously wherever we can go, that's going to work the best for, for everybody is great. But I think that, that communication to folks is going to be pretty important. So if there's one that works that's under the county, then I would almost opt for that, I guess. It's just one point I wanted to make. Anybody have any other comments or questions or anything on? I guess that little debrief.
I would just follow up. I don't want to step on if anybody else has anything else, but I, just on the next steps for the process. I will be fine tuning the resolution and sending it out to Chris and to the board. So back country becomes effective. And part of law as soon as the resolution is executed and recorded. So that is the next step that's being done right now. So if anyone has a question, if that country is actively in place, it is not until the resolution's recorded. So currently working on that. Incorporating those conditions into, so that's, just want to make sure that I have that language. So I'll be working with board and with Chris to just make sure that I have that as accurate as, you know, and articulate right, articulate it right. And then I'll be taking it to the next board meeting for their approval. So those are just the process itself, you know, it will have it in place then. We are also, if anyone wants to see the forms, the application forms that they will fill out when they want to apply for that country structure or site plan. I had sent those over before, but I'm happy we'll be putting them up on the website or if you'd like to see them ahead of time. Always welcome to any critiques of them or anything that you want. Then added to them, just like Howard's comment about ninety nine oh four. So just let me know if you would like to see those. I'm happy to share them. So I think that's great. Yes, and like Sarah said, maybe we will be able to may not be able to, oh, go ahead, Sarah. I'm sorry, I'm.
I just wanted, I didn't know if that, if that, if you intended for to be ready for the next board meeting, but for everyone's information, the board is planning to table our next regular meeting from the twenty first to the twenty eighth due to conflicts and people being out of town for spring break.
Awesome. I might actually have it ready with that extra week. So thank you.
Well, and I guess to that note, Anne sent out an email earlier about next week's meeting is on the twenty first for the rezon- rezone application is, everybody available for that on next Monday? Can I just get, show of hands and or comments that they cannot?
I'm fifty fifty. I will, I will know here in the next day, but we're traveling that day. I just think we may be there by then.
Okay. Howard, Joey, Commissioner Fiedler, anybody, you guys, Jamie, will you guys be there?
I cannot make it unfortunately.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I, I won't be around for the twenty first.
Okay.
I will be around. And I'll be available.
Okay, so we do have most of our planning commissioners, but that is a joint public hearing, correct? And so we'll want to make sure Kayla, we'd have that, I guess we'd want to check in with Kayla or in that way, play, we would still, everybody would still need to show up next Monday and table it if if we don't have a quorum of county commissioners and planning commission. So plan on still, please, logging in on next Monday and then Anne will be in touch if it sounds like we're going to end up just making it short and tabling it or if we'll be hearing the application. And then it's just the DOLA training. Anne?
Right. So just maybe by a thumbs up if you would like me to look into the availability of them to do that. You see, one, two, great, three, four, awesome. Okay. Perfect. So I will reach out. They usually are really gracious about getting those scheduled for us. So I will be in touch about doing that. I will. First preference, if it sounds good to everyone, I will also try to shoot for one of our regular meeting dates. So it's something that's already kind of on your radar. And if, if those aren't possible, then I'll, I'll poll everybody for secondary dates. Okay, great. Awesome. Thank you all so much.
Great. Anybody have anything else? We're getting out early tonight. Does anybody, I can entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Awesome. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody. Have a really great night.
Have a good night.
See you next week.
See ya.